Look, I need a little amusement. I'm pretty interested in research. All that stuff's on the beautiful circle. You want to go like a person? Okay. You both do. Yeah. It is. It's only about that. Check out. Well, nothing said just being smart. Take me to the store. Now you want to wait and play it?
That's right.
Okay. Good evening. How are you guys? We will, please stop me if you wish. We'll be to the point here. You should have a hard copy in front of you and obviously your screen and we'll go through this in a workman type time wise here. Let me mention to you that we, as we always do, the budget process is certainly not something that just began a couple of months ago. We worked throughout the year as a staff. We involve you all individually at different times, ask you questions, and on several occasions we've asked you what particular projects you might want to see this year. So it's a process that's been fairly successful over the last decade, but any point in time you get any questions, feel free to stop me and we'll certainly try to answer them. All the staffs here, all the department heads are here and we'll go from there. Let me say, we review preliminary budget recommendations, address questions and issues, and you may ask me any questions and issues about pending legislation, and that's just what it is, pending legislation. You know, budget is based on what we know now, and I believe that will probably be the process for this fiscal year anyway, but let me say we have no reason to believe anything different. We hear an awful lot of comments about the changing in the tax reform, but where that's going to go, we really don't know as we speak. All right. A process, we do a little different than some. We begin to project revenues early on if we can in attempt to make this thing as a balanced budget. Certainly, department heads put down needs and so forth, but we're very careful in trying to attempt to recognize what we believe doable revenues are, and those revenues are based, quite frankly, and Peggy and Frank does a really nice job. We look at economic conditions, we look at sales tax, we see where we are on tax collections, we see where we are on fees, collections, and we begin to work forward for the next fiscal year. Department heads are given the opportunity to identify needs. They, only in line item accounts, but also in capital. We ask them to sit down and do a prioritization on capital needs and to what they truly need in terms of their overall objectives for that fiscal year, and they do a really good job with that. We attempt to establish priorities based on what we hear from you all and what we see in terms of conditions of equipment, facilities, in terms of capital operations. We look at the bond market, we look at a number of things, what we can do in terms of handling our funds, and each year we make this statement, but it's the truth. The decisions which you all face is based on unlimited needs, but very limited resources. We have to have a balanced budget. We have for the last decade, hopefully we can have going forward. So it's laid out in a fairly simplistic manner. We don't do this to try to overwhelm people and almost overcomplicate the budget. I think you can do that very easily if you try. We try to get down to brass tacks numbers and then try to put those numbers with needs. 1314, it was determined that revenues for property taxes and sales taxes would be up slightly. That's based on trends. It's also, I will give our staff credit, they do a really good job in terms of collection on property taxes. We see some movement in reference to sales tax increase in revenue, not a lot, but some. There's a small growth in real property, and again, the sales tax numbers go up and down throughout the year, but the average seems to be an increase. Often, we're asked about what the state numbers are. We get those projections, we try to, we look at those projections, but we look more at what we see on our sales tax. So that's how we look at our numbers. Of course, we have to prepare, as I said earlier, we have to prepare a balanced budget. We do know we face going in, and Nolan does a nice job of air identifying what the guy increases in utilities will be, especially in reference to electricity and natural gas. We're a very big power user. We, the fuel cost situation is a moving target. We look at those trends over the last year, and as I said, as we did last year, we continue to set aside funds for fire service expansion when the new station is indeed constructed. And Charles, you wouldn't even need to get in right now. We still have negotiations with the property that we identified had to retreat overnight for the fire station.
Yes, we're doing our due diligence on that property now, and we have some subsold evaluations done, the title work's being done, and we've agreed upon a price that was discussed by the council work session two months ago. We anticipate that if everything looks good, we'll probably close on it by around the first of June.
Talked a little bit about the uncertainty in state revenues due to tax reform. We don't, we really don't know where that's going to go. There's been some basics rolled out in the last week. It's getting an awful lot of discussion, and we'll see whether we've actually got those, but really, we talked to the people at the leg and not anticipating huge changes in the 1314 fiscal year because it's certainly going to take a time to implement any of these changes, they're so significant. We have increased the budget in small areas to try to deal with some capital outlay requests, especially in the area of vehicles, and also with some paving on some roads. Our road system is in good shape, but each year we go further out from the last bond package. It takes a little bit more as the age of these roads continue to go forward, so we've increased that this year. The budget includes an increase in employee contribution for healthcare coverage, families, spouses, children, and that's based on the projected costs we see for healthcare going forth next year, which is pretty much across the country. Our amount is limited compared to most, but it's still, that's our policy the council will set forth to make those adjustments based on potential increases. Proposed budget contains funding for an average 2% in merit for all full-time city employees. That's basically a 0 to 4% with 2% in the middle grade for employees. That's performance-based, that's not market adjustment, cost of living, but merit-based. And there are no new positions funded in the proposed budget. General fund, which is police, fire, parks and rec, general and special legal, public works, IT, HR, health services, finance, engineering, planning, GIS, and the first thing we got a budget for is debt service. Normal property tax revenue increased to 216,000. Sales tax potentially, we projected an increase of about 310,000. All departments are asked to submit a no-growth budget except for certain areas, capital is fuel, which is an increase in general fund, projected increase of about $81,500. Utilities, not bad this year, only about 68,000, and this is also shows a one-time increase, but unemployment contribution due to the state changes of 125,000 this year, which we have not had in the past. We continue to focus on providing basic city services in a quality manner. We use the word "basic city services." As Mr. Huffman has mentioned on numerous occasions over the last years, we're not into colosseums, we're not into doing some things other communities have done, we're not in providing a new, getting involved in a cable system like some cities of our size have done, and Wilson and Salisbury has created significant debt for them. We're, what we do is what we attempt to do and do it in the best way we can. We also have commitments to maintain and upgrade neighborhoods throughout the city. That's done through a number of sources, community policing, the CBC program, which continues to be a very active program, especially at this time of the year. That revolves around also increased efforts in minimal housing compliance, and also through some economic development efforts to revitalize commercial and industrial vacant properties, and we're beginning to put together hopefully a stronger policy on that, but certainly we want to work with the existing property owners. Major capital costs, and again, if you've got questions, stop me. Sanitation, there's two items, that's those two major vehicles, is about $345,000 between the two, a loader and a rear loader. 10 police vehicles, street paving, we've increased to over 900,000. Computer software, hardware, excuse me, 200,000, and then major roof repairs at Broad Street and also at the equipment services area, which are significant expenses, but we're attempting to put a schedule in on that, so to keep the billings in good condition, but do it over a period of time so it won't all lump in at one particular time. Continue to maintain and improve the city's infrastructure to promote economic development and improve quality of life, the proposal, the budget. We have included four areas this year that we've talked about and you've had reports made to you, and these are the same amounts of money that was budgeted last year. The Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development, 50,000. The Burlington, Alamance Airport Authority, 232,500. Burlington Downtown Corporation, $75,000 in a second grant based on need that they bring programs in for another 75,000. The Downtown Corporation is also requesting the council to maintain the 16% property tax for the special tax district, and also to provide the $26,400 to ACTA, which was going to add on this past year recall, to fund the form of public transportation. The proposed budget is, the general fund side is $48,276,000 or 2.7% decrease, and let me go ahead and make sure we kind of explain that. We and Peggy actually has a statute, we've talked an awful lot with local government commission concerning the sharing of expenses that we normally do with the water and sewer enterprise fund. In the past, we've just taken some revenue and pulled it over to general fund, and we've involved Charles in this discussion also. What we have done this year, and you'll see it in the water and sewer account, we are basically taking the expenses and we are budgeting it as part of water and sewer, areas that we share expenses, for example, legal, administration, engineering, collections, finance. The amount of money which we do that with is something that we have a private firm to come in and look at how we, the amount of time we put forth in that fund to allocate the type, the percentages of money we can budget in that fund. So really, that's an expense to the enterprise fund. That is actually budgeted in water and sewer this year. You can note, that's why the budget is basically, is decreased, well, decreased 2.7% from the general fund side. With that being said, the proposed budget keeps the tax rate as it is, the 58 cents per hundred thousand dollar value, for hundred dollar valuation. We'll continue our police compensation packages we have now for the last six years. We're funding for expansion of fire services, and again, the one-time increase that we see, we noticed earlier on the unemployment insurance to the state. That's a one-time cost of that, after that, that number begins to average out going forward.
We do have our normal unemployment.
That's correct.
In terms of pay in addition to that.
That's correct, and that's normally what, about $25,000 a year, Peggy?
About 20,000.
Yeah.
Harold, let me ask a question on that. Would you explain that, I mean, was this a result of some legislation or just how did it come about?
Yes, evidently early in the legislative session, the state faced a significant deficit of unemployment cost, and there were adjustments made to private businesses in terms of percentage higher, and then the league, they worked with the league in identifying, and Peggy, I can't tell you exactly how the number 125,000 dollars was reached by community, was it based per capita? Per capita cost.
Okay.
And that's throughout the, throughout the state.
So a smaller, smaller city wouldn't pay?
Right, right, yes.
And larger cities obviously pay more.
That's right, yes.
Also, you used to pay back to federal government or what?
That's right. And then, of course, they passed the law that going forward, they reduced the amount of unemployment you could pay out to people based on the time the state did going forward. So that was a way to try to balance that out. You can see, the left side is proposed revenues, the right, obviously, is expenses, of course it's balanced. You note that, as we do each year, when we go down here, especially on the revenue side, we often hear about property taxes. Property taxes creates about 48% of our revenue only. You know, it's the vehicle tax. You can note the third item there, state share taxes. That's the item that franchise tax, privileged license, no, not privileged license, sorry, franchise tax, beer and wine is included in that, and that's the two items that have been talked to, spoken about, some changes at the state level. You can tell that's why we had passed a resolution to last council meeting, and we've talked so much with the state concern. That's a, it's a big number for us guys. Sales tax is really pretty good per capita. We do really well in this community. Reason being, let's be honest, the interstate helps us a lot, and retail sales are important to us. You notice the next particular item is interest on investments. That's, that's a low number, and it's quite frankly getting lower. Our returns are just not very good. You can see the privileged license, which is a chunk of change for us, about half a million dollars. And the way we've done privileged license here over the years, and we speak to this, is the small mom and pop store pays a very small amount a year, maybe $25. We have charged based on grocery receipts, so your larger chain companies come in, your Lowe's, your Home Depots, your Target, your Walmarts, they pay a considerable more amount of money to try to equal that competition level out there. There's some discussions at state level about changing privileged license opportunities, we'll see. Permits are up a little. We're seeing some growth, we've begun to see some things. You saw at the council meeting last Tuesday night, two items of request for some growth. We've begun to see a little of that coming back. The other fees there are fairly consistent. You notice that sanitation and parks and rec is about 2.2, $2,228,000. So the fees are, you know, close to what they've been in the past. The expense on the other side, it shows you breakdown of your operations by department percentage-wise. As usual, public safety is almost 40% of our budget. The four large operations is public safety, public works and recreation. You take those numbers, and that's about, if I'm not mistaken, about 69% of our costs between those four departments. And as I said, the first thing we pay is, the last one there is debt service, which is, that's a relatively low number for most cities on the general fund side at 6.7%. It's very low. We've done well with that. Any questions?
Harold, on the revenue side, Peggy, when you're talking about interest on investments, what was that number six years ago?
Well, I'm not sure about six years ago, but it has been perhaps two and a half years in the past 10 to 12.
I guess my point was, it's been a consistent decline, certainly for the last five years, and hard to see it going any lower, obviously.
Yeah, it's pretty low there.
But that literally is a, is a loss of revenue that has to be balanced out in other means, and sometimes you don't think about investment income, even if municipality is being as important as it is, but it's significant.
And it's a hope long-term that somehow rates come back up and it provides some revenue versus some capital cost. But I will tell you that what we've done internally is that you, to keep what's happened at the state level, I think you have to be realistic about budgeting that number because we can't get used to that high number because it's going to go away eventually, so you kind of keep that perspective going forward as you budget it. All right. This is just a pie chart, which I think you can see better than I can see here. It's not, this number's pretty small, broken down in reference, I mentioned earlier, on the revenue side, and you'll note that the blue there is, of course, is real property tax, but again, that's like 48% of our entire operation. And these are actually broken down in a description of the revenue sources, how the numbers are. It's a term you guys use a lot to be as transparent as possible. That lays it out right there, exactly where each of the revenue comes from and how it's used. I will tell you that the appropriated fund balance number has been budgeted now, I know for the last 10 years, and we've never used that amount of money. We've never, I have to give you guys credit, just one discipline throughout the year, and certainly our department heads credit for managing an operation of each, of each fiscal year. Any questions, comments? Chart on the operations, in terms of expenditure breakdown. Okay, the water and sewer fund. As we always note, this is a true enterprise fund. I thought it'd do a very good job, I think, making that presentation when they do the end of the year review, denoting that what, what the objectives are in terms of basically having additional revenues compared to expenditures to pick back to cover liabilities that we have. And we have an awful lot of lines underneath the ground, of course, the plants are large operations. The part of this fund is broken down into these particular areas. It's repair and construction, plants in operation, labs, composting, debt service, and customer service billing, which is all part, and I will note the customer service billing has continued to change. We're at about 22,000 accounts now with the economy, an awful lot of turn-ons and cutoffs due to people moving. That, that particular traffic has increased substantially over the last three years significantly. Proposed budget is $26,353,000. Actually, the budget is flat, and then you may say, well, how can it be flat when you turn that expenditure over? The expenditure for the money that used to be moved back to water, to the general fund was already expensing water and sewer, so it's just a financial term we've used here, but it's a flat budget. What we have asked for here is a 2.5% increase to be considered in water and sewer rates, and that's to offset loss of revenue from decreasing consumption. As you all know, we have a number of contracts with a number of different outside agencies. We have contracts with Greensboro, Elon, Gibsonville, Alamance, on the waterside, Hall River, Alamance Orange, are all communities that we deal with. On the storm waters, excuse me, the wastewater treatment side, we have Gibsonville, Elon, Alamance, Sweptsville, Hall River, Green Level, well, Green Level goes through Hall River, excuse me. So we deal with an awful lot of number of different contracts that come and go in terms of expiration dates at different times, so we're constantly working with these communities. The average residential customer increase, based on what our projection is, is about 96 cents a month using 5,000 gallons of water and sewer. So that's what an increase would equal to. Also, I can't tell you because I don't have all the numbers, but I can assure you, we're still probably being a Latin, it's still a lowest third or less of any rate systems there are in the state, and that's with the system, I think, is in pretty good, really good condition now. And again, the same average merit-based pay is included in this fund as it is in the, in the general fund for employees, and that's available employees, zero to four, 2% average. There continues to be somewhat of a decrease in consumption of water. Plants and companies are getting, the ones we still have are getting more efficient. It's not a lot, but it's some. The sewage usage is flat, and we're very lucky there, we do have some of the last remaining industrial customers. Our interest income remains very low as we do same things in the general fund. I will say, with our water system, we're still one of the few communities, and it was mentioned the other day, every, every water system is different. We're one of the few communities that still have a decline in block schedule for heavy users of water. In other words, the more water you use, the less you pay. And cities that have challenged amounts of volume, that, that particular situation is opposite, the more you use, the higher you pay. We're blessed with what the investment has been over the years in terms of our resources, and we're very fortunate to have that kind of supply. Same concept in reference to varying costs. Utilities is about $77,000 increase in water and sewer, equipment, energy. Chemical costs continues to go up, and even that's with us neighboring or contracting with our neighboring communities, and we buy along with, I think, High Point and Greensboro both, you and I, Bob, on chemicals.
Some of them.
What we can. That cost does continue to go up, and we have, we funded the capital request at 100% this year, and all that is direct cost. There's no, no debt service here in terms of any kind of capital for this year. It is direct cost in terms of how we budget it for, for projects going forward.
Harold, let me ask you a question.
Okay.
On the, the water issue, what is the timeline for AO coming online? Is that a couple of years from now?
Actually, the application process is April, excuse me, July or September this year for the grants and all.
September.
And then that will be in terms of getting right away.
Have to have ready to proceed documents in order to fly.
A couple of years.
Sort of a year or two.
We would, well, us people know the result of their application by January.
Another water customer.
The, the construction should take about 12 months.
Commitment to maintain and improve our infrastructure. I saw last, about three weeks ago, a major water line break in Wake Barst, and that's now handled through the Raleigh system, and they were required to boil water for two days. And the town of Wake Barst has grown an awful lot in the last few years. To maintain annual reserves, because our expenses in water and sewer are just that, they're expensive. There's just very few cheap or small capital costs, and we really did try to continue to fund our capital request. That first item is something used in the labs, I'm not even going there to tell you what it is. It's a, it's a very big word, and so it must be some pretty special life passion.
Yes.
We need two of them.
Yeah. It does something, that's sure. Continue, we continue to work with inflow and filtration reduction.
...of our costs between those four departments. And as I said, the first thing we pay is the last one there is debt service, which is, that's a relatively low number for most cities on the general fund side at 6.7%. It's very low. We've done well with that. Any questions?
Harold, the revenue side, Peggy, when you're talking about interest on investments, what was that number six years ago?
Well, I'm not sure about six years ago, but it has been a high 2.5 million in the past 10 to 12.
I guess my point was, it's been a consistent decline, certainly for the last five years. And hard to see it going any lower, obviously.
Yeah, it's pretty low there.
But that literally is a loss of revenue that has to be balanced out in other means. And sometimes you don't think about investment income, even if it's paltry, being as important as it is, but it's significant.
And it's a hope long-term that somehow rates come back up and it provides some revenue efficiency and capital cost. But I will tell you that what we've done internally is that, to keep what's happened at the state level, I think you have to be realistic about budgeting that number because we can't get used to that high number, because it's going to go away eventually. So you kind of keep that perspective going forward as you budget it. All right. This is a pie chart, which I think you can see better than I can see here. It's not, this number's pretty small, broken down in reference, I mentioned earlier, on the revenue side. And you'll note that the blue there is, of course, is real property tax, but again, that's like 48% of our entire operation. And these are actually broken down in a description of the revenue sources, how the numbers are. It's a term you guys use a lot to be as transparent as possible. That lays it out right there, exactly where each of the revenue comes from and how it's used. I will tell you that the appropriated fund balance number has been budgeted now, I know for the last 10 years, and we've never used that amount of money. We've never, I have to give you guys credit just for discipline throughout the year, and certainly as a department here's credit for managing an operation of each fiscal year. Any questions, comments? Chart on the operations, in terms of expenditure breakdown. Okay, the water and sewer fund. As we always note, this is a true enterprise fund. Our auditors do a very good job, I think, making that presentation when they do the end-of-the-year review, denoting that what the objectives are in terms of basically having additional revenues compared to expenditures to pick back to cover liabilities that we have. And we have an awful lot of lines underneath the ground, of course, the plants are large operations. The part of this fund is broken down into these particular areas. It's repair and construction, plants and operation, labs, composting, debt service, and customer service billing, which is all part. And I will note the customer service billing has continued to change. We're at about 22,000 accounts now with the economy, an awful lot of turn-ons and cutoffs due to people moving. That particular traffic has increased substantially over the last three years significantly. Proposed budget, $26,353,000. Actually, the budget is flat. And then you may say, well, how can it be flat when you turn that expenditure over? The expenditure for the money that used to be moved back to water to the general fund was already expensing water and sewer. So it's just a financial term we've used here, but it's a flat budget. What we have asked for here is a 2.5% increase to be considered in water and sewer rates, and that's to offset loss of revenue from decreasing consumption. As you all know, we have a number of contracts with a number of different outside agencies. We have contracts with Greensboro, Elon, Gibsonville, Alamance, on the water side, Hall River, Alamance Orange, are all communities that we deal with. On the stormwater, excuse me, the wastewater treatment side, we have Gibsonville, Elon, Alamance, Sweptsville, Hall River, Green Level, well, Green Level goes through Hall River, excuse me. So we deal with an awful lot, a number of different contracts that come and go in terms of expiration dates at different times. So we're constantly working with these communities. The average residential customer increase, based on what our projection is, is about 96 cents a month using 5,000 gallons of water and sewer. So that's what an increase would equal to. Also, I can't tell you, because I don't have all the numbers, but I can assure you, we've still probably been in Latin, it's still a lowest third or less of any rate systems there are in the state. And that's with the system, I think, in pretty good, really good condition now. And again, the same average merit-based pay is included in this fund as it is in the general fund for employees, and that's available employees, zero to four, 2% average. There continues to be somewhat of a decrease in consumption of water. Plants and companies are getting, the ones we still have are getting more efficient. It's not a lot, but it's some. The sewage usage is flat, and we're very lucky there, we do have some of the last remaining industrial customers. Our interest income remains very low, as we do the same things in the general fund. I will say, with our water system, we're still one of the few communities, and it was mentioned the other day, every water system is different. We're one of the few communities that still have a declining block schedule for heavy users of water. In other words, the more water you use, the less you pay. And cities that have challenged amounts of volume, that particular situation is opposite. The more you use, the higher you pay. We're blessed with investment of been over the years in terms of our resources, and we're very fortunate to have that kind of supply. Same concept in reference to varying costs. Utilities is about $77,000 increase in water and sewer equipment, Duke Energy. Chemical cost continues to go up, and even that's with us neighboring or contracting with our neighboring communities, and we buy, along with, I think, High Point and Greensboro both, you and I, Bob, on chemicals.
Some of them.
What we can. That cost does continue to go up. And we funded the capital request at 100% this year. And all that is direct cost. There's no debt service here in terms of any kind of capital for this year. It is direct cost in terms of how we budget it for projects going forward.
Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
On the water issue, what is the timeline for AO coming online? Is that a couple of years from now?
Actually, the application process is April, excuse me, July or September this year for the grants.
September.
And then that will be in terms of getting right away.
Have to have ready to proceed documents in order to fly.
A couple of years, a year or two.
We would, well, us people know the result of their application by January.
Another water customer.
The construction should take about 12 months.
Commitment to maintain and improve our infrastructure. I saw last, about three weeks ago, a major water line break in Wake Barst, and that's now handled through the Raleigh system. And they were required to boil water for two days. And the town of Wake Barst has grown an awful lot in the last few years. To maintain annual reserves, because our expenses in water and sewer are just that, they're expensive. There's just very few cheap or small capital costs. And we really did try to continue to fund our capital request. That first item is something used in the labs. I'm not even going there to tell you what it is. It's a very big word, and so it must be some pretty special life passion.
Yes.
We need two of them.
Yeah. It does something, that's sure. Continue, we continue to work with inflow and filtration reduction, two-inch water line repairs. And that last item there is a big one this year, is Little Alamance Creek Sewer Outfall. That's over $1.3 million. And Bob, why don't you tell them exactly where that's at? And I had a couple of them ask some questions on that.
That's one of our trunk lines that flows through the south plant. It's a very old line, I'm not sure of the age, but it's a 24-inch diameter concrete pipe. We had noticed problems over the years with the condition of the pipe, settling the joints, and a suspected large infiltration problem. Back several years ago, when we had the era stimulus funding, this was a project that we identified and applied for stimulus funding, but wasn't funded. Through that process, we did have some plans ready for design. It's a little over 6,000 feet of line that would be lined with a cast in, or cured in place lining material. And that would leave the pipe in place, but refurbish the pipe in a no-dig method. And that's estimated between construction and engineering about 1.3 million.
And that's going to be from what, where to where? Where's that? Along Little Alamance Creek, where is that?
It's, it ties into the outfall that goes to the south plant, just near Graham, up to the, roughly the Hanford Road area, about a little over a mile, 6,000 feet.
Some of you recall, we did the very same thing at Little River Park a few years ago, to the sewer line there, where you go in and you basically insulate it. It's a pretty neat process, you don't have to dig it up, you just go in, and it works really well.
6,000 feet long, is what you said?
Yes, sir.
Little of a mile, yeah. We probably need to explain, how many miles of lines we have in the ground?
Sewer lines, I believe, are somewhere in the neighborhood of 415 miles, and then water's around 420, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Now, one issue, and I'll say that there's a study bill now, well, it was a bill that was proposed by Representative Moffitt from Asheville, not only about their Asheville system, but another bill was proposed about looking at how enterprise systems could function. And the legislature was at least, had some foresight to make that a study bill, which we've been asked to, and I expect one of you all, hopefully, will go, we've been asked to testify at some point in time during next year's legislation. The one part of that bill that I didn't catch until the guy from Durham called me about this, was the very last half a sentence. And he put in there that there would be no retained earnings on an annual basis in the enterprise system, which means, well, it goes, I'm not sure, what it means is you can't run the system, because you can't have money back to fix, to repair equipment. The only thing I know going forward, if indeed that's ever adopted, what we might need to do is go in and determine a system where we would just simply have to budget on an annual basis, upfitting a certain amount of each line based on a systematic approach. If you can't, you know, if you can't show any revenue at the end, or profits, or for better revenues compared to expenditures at the end of the year, that puts you in a situation where you simply can't operate something of 410 miles of one line and 415 miles of a line. That's not including your plants.
What is it that he is really trying to get to?
I'm not sure on that one. I can't figure that, because that's just a pure business approach there. I don't get that one. I think he believes that these systems must make an awful lot of money. And the only thing I can, I'm certainly not saying with cities, but to give him, or at least in his defense, you still have some electric cities in the state that, one especially down east, is no way the tax value can be that high. But I don't know. That's just a good question.
What is he trying to get toward utilities like electric that are funding economic development programs out of their utilities? Is that what he's trying to go for?
Well, I think he's trying to say that you're turning money back and taking utilities and keeping the, potentially the property tax artificially low. It's a comment I've heard him make. I'm not sure, that's certainly not many places, for sure.
Ain't with an awful broad brush.
But that's why I keep saying, just note now, your property tax revenue, as we speak, is only 48% of your general fund. It's not nearly what many people think it is in terms of funding that operation. So these potential impacts, we'll see just where that all plays out long-term. It's just expenses broken down, you'll note that it's really very specific in water and sewer in reference to where money is spent by plants, by type efforts, labs, which is another expense that people just don't understand how important that is in terms of water quality. Debt service is 18.5 in water and sewer, which is not high, but of course, we've taken the debt on for the repair of the dams and the work at the wastewater treatment plants. So it's a, it's an interesting, an interesting operation. Okay, questions? Feel free to stop me here. This is a graph breakdown of the revenues again. You'll note some of the larger users. As I always say, our largest water user, in terms of operations or organizations or industry, is the city of Greensboro.
Now, Harold, going back to the rate increase, we, back in 2010, 2011, I believe it was, we implemented a 7% increase, and we've done that three straight years for a total of 21%. And now we're thinking about the 2.5% increase as well. So to make sure I understand, that the 21% that we did over a three-year period was for the Jordan Lake improvements and, period, is that correct?
The dam replacements, the dam repairs also.
All right, so that answers the questions about the 21%. All right, now, 2.5, and you're saying is the 2.5% is due to a lack of, or a loss of consumption, I guess, is the terminology.
Well, yeah, that's right. Another part of that is that there was very little money in those three years for increases in reference to just operational cost. It was that mostly put back towards capital expenses. So I give Bob and his people credit, they really held the line in reference to operational expenses and other capital needs, just besides those plants. I mean, the line replacements, it's, they've done a nice job. So the 2.5% is to keep us at kind of an even keel going forward. And it's important as we negotiate contracts going forward with all these different people. That's an important process. We've, that's.
I just think it needs to be stated, there's a big difference, you know, from the dam and the Jordan Lake versus just the loss of consumption.
So breakdown expenditures. Debt service is actually larger. Here's a projection in terms of the bill that the average customer will get every two months. And you'll note that the average bill, customer bill, is made up of a number of things. It's just based on 5,000 gallons per month use. You see the projected water use, you see the projected sewer cost, the Jordan Lake mandate there, dam repairs, all that's part of the capital that was in this, and it's council that's supposed to show that on the bill itself. Our stormwater fees remains at $2. We're, I believe, of any communities our size, we're confident, we're by far the cheapest of anybody in the state on that. Now, that's going to, going forward, that's a, we'll see what happens with some of the legislation now in reference to what happens with stormwater, and especially with retrofitting. That retrofitting thing is still out there that we're concerned with. And Michael does, Michael Lynch has done a really nice job, worked with the legislature on that and stays involved, and Bob's worked with him also. Solid waste and recycling remains the same. So the average, I'm sorry, the total monthly bill, yeah, we don't monthly pay, excuse me, now, I apologize, is $47.81 looking forward. That's an increase of about, a small increase, about 3 cents a day, based on what we're looking at for, with this change in the proposed rate schedule. 2,500 gallon user, and Frank helped me here, that would be your, maybe one or two people living in a household?
Probably only one person.
I will tell you that if you've invested in one of the new washing machines, that's a, they're pretty expensive, but they, someone told me the other day, now that gets it down about three gallons of water usage. There are some communities in the country that's considering doing incentives who have lack of water for people who actually purchase those types of appliances. That's not a good, that's not a good situation to be in, have to do that. But that individual cost per day would be about 2 cents based on the projected proposed rate, rate structure. Stormwater, again, there's no changes there as we speak. Issues, we are continuing to develop and implement an enforced program to reduce discharge of pollutants, that's by state regulations, continuing to map the city's storm drainage system. All this is requirements from the state that, due to manpower cuts in the state, the city's responsible for doing. Continuing the public education process, which is, again, is a requirement by the state that the local municipalities are doing. I know we've had our ups and downs with Deaner, and we hear an awful lot about cutting the Deaner budget at the state level, and some people tend to celebrate that. I would just caution you that often, when those cuts are made, that's a rundown effect of local governments in terms of services that the state may have provided, then local governments have to require to provide the services, especially in terms of lobbies programs here in reference to inspections. That's done at the state, at the local level, and at a local level expense. So just a cut doesn't automatically mean everybody wins there. There are other funds in the budget that we speak to. Some of this is like RICO, controlled substance abuse, the MPO program, where it's funded money. Guilford-McIntosh, even though Guilford County has changed substantially their parks and recreation operation, it didn't impact us any Guilford-McIntosh. It remained the same. Our rental rehab program, municipal tax districts budgets, rehab programs, this is all through community development. We're in the final year of Bureau of Justice to the Community Policing Grant. That comes off next year, that will be on additional expense next year. And the Community Development Block Grant Program, as we talked about at the last meeting, we're not sure where those numbers are going to be yet. We think we're close there, but we have not got specific information from the Fed yet. I will tell you, in reference to the federal level, RICO money now has been frozen also, until some kind of agreement is reached, how money has impacted us.
Across the country?
Yes, yes.
How about the, how long have we had the Community Policing Grant?
This is the, this will be the third year, not the last part of the one that I did.
Yes, sir.
So next year, they're all ours. I think that's, if I'm not mistaken, that's about another 2, about a $225,000 liability next year in terms of an expense. And part of our agreement is we keep them that extra year, as part of the agreement was a not. So that's there. So for those, those particular officers. Okay, questions or comments? Were we here staff that, you know, we'll try to attempt to address anything that you might have and provide you additional information. Obviously, the public hearing for this will be the first meet, the first Tuesday in June for the budget to be adopted. We'll publish this as by state statute, after we leave here tonight, get input from you all, and then we will, you know, we'll go forward. So, questions?
I'd say to the chiefs, assistant chiefs, and chief Smith, that this Community Policing Grant, I'd like, hopefully you guys can go out there and find some more money for this somewhere, if there's any out there, because this has been a big issue with our communities and the jobs that you guys have done in the communities. And people appreciate that. And I hate to see this thing end, which, you know, I don't want the taxpayers to pay for it, but we've got to do it. I think our communities is just going to be safer as long as these guys are out there on their bicycles and patrolling the streets and things. And if you, I know it's not asking a lot, but if you guys could look at it, I may give it away from you, chief, about the first $48, maybe other loan if you can find something to do with it. But it's important that we try to find something to do to keep you guys out on the creek.
The chief's mind in the game, committee, we're meeting this hard, community policing, we'll take a little different twist going forward. And community policing, we'll get all of the city. Might not be just adding extra people, but everybody can be involved in community policing, every. The question that I get an awful lot is, why is community policing just in certain neighborhoods? Well, that's a good question.
On the merit pay raises, if the council decides to give you as the city manager and Mr. Bateman and as the attorney, is that money included in this budget?
2% is included across the board.
Well, 0 to 4, 2 is the average. My question is, is it included in this budget?
That's a small amount compared to the overall expense that, that's a council.
Absolutely.
The water and sewer budget, are we, how many cities continue to have a declining block, as you refer to? And the reason I say this is that, you know, from an economic development standpoint, that you would hope that at some point in time, we would have seen that marketed as a draw for the city. But I don't think I ever recall any reports back from the Chamber of Commerce that that made hell of things one way or the other. I sense sometime that adequate water and sewer capacity is a given across the state.
I think you're right in some ways. Actually, Sheech's recognized it. We did our proposal, Charles remembers, we talked to them. That's a different company, that's a whole, I mean, that's an unusual management team. It continues to be important to the manufacturing that we still have, and their pockets, even with textiles, we're still very fortunate to have. It's also, you know, there is some discount, if you think about it in reference to cities, because we sell to cities at a price, because they have to mark that price up, because they're responsible for all the infrastructure and the ground in their communities. With our rates that our resident would get would be cheaper because of our costs. But it's becoming, it's going to become, I think, an issue or a discussion with even with other communities and other cities, because we are a, how should I put this? Can't tell you the percentage. A lot of our water, our citizens, a lot of our people outside use our resource that we have. We sell it to them. Because you recall back in 2002, when the textiles, in 2003, when the textiles vanished so much in the late 90s, we had this robust system. And the only way we could try to keep this system operating at a competitive price was you'd ask us to market that to other communities. We made the deal with Greensboro, which we're in the midst of working with now again. We've made the deal with the, to Hall River, Alamance Orange. And that consumption number is what kept us up at a level that we are. So it's getting to be, David, a... So, it's a, it's getting to be, David, a, a more competitive environment, even with our municipalities now, in terms of rate structures too. I can't tell you, though, any particular business moved here, because we have low water rates, I can't tell you that, though.
And most of your other cities now have done, maybe, those were lowering block as you use larger quantities. In fact, some of your larger cities, if I'm not mistaken, have actually gone in the other direction, in an effort to encourage conservation.
Your Raleigh South, Graham, for example, has got a flat schedule. I'm not sure about Mevin, Charles, on what y'all have.
It's a progressive schedule.
Progressive. But again, we have the volume, which is, and again, not only just the volume of it, but our, as I mentioned in the paper earlier, our, our, our resources in, in terms of our watersheds are so plentiful, when it gets, we really refill our lakes very quickly, especially McIntosh. It's amazing how McIntosh refills.
Well, our, our rates and our capacity certainly going to aid an existing business to expand, but a business that's coming in here, quite frankly, they're going to run their business plan based on the rates of what area they're looking at, and if, if the numbers work, they're going to do it. So it's not necessarily going to be an attractant, but it certainly can stabilize somebody that's already here, or, or a company that's, that's getting ready to expand, it's going, they're going to be able to calculate into their potential.
And Charles, you might want to comment, we've talked about it, in using this as a recruiting tool.
Yeah, I think, and we've talked about this with Amy as well, as she develops new recruiting strategies for business, we need to be targeting big water users and actively recruiting them. I mean, it's not enough, I believe, just to rely on the Chamber of Commerce. City of Burlington has got a magnificent resource, and that should be one of our major draws for recruiting new industry, and I think that's in works, Amy is working on that now.
I think that's something we need to follow up on in the short.
Definitely, that, that's, that's the future growth for the city. And there are very few places in the state, or even in the southeast, that can match the, the availability, the quantity, the quality, and the rate structure that City of Burlington has.
If you read over the weekend, Atlanta paper had an article concerning their issues with water, since it's been ongoing in Atlanta, even though with the, with the plentiful water over the, over the winter, it, it has to be the right, the right match. But as Ed Kitchen once told me, you, you don't know what pressure is or stress is to when you have no water and you wake up and the sun's shining. We take that for granted here. Bob was involved, obviously, with McIntosh, and the city wasn't, wants that position with Bob. So it's a, that's a great resource to have, guys.
Well, you put the resource, that resource and the location, I mean, to me, it's a no brainer.
Yeah, that's a great resource. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. We've had, tonight, we're going to do several other things, as we talked about in back and forth. We're in the midst of boards and commissions appointments. I believe Rachel had, had sent out a document to you all in terms of recommendations, or at least people who had signed up for the various openings and vacancies in each, each one of the commissions. And Rachel, I'm going to let you, if you would, come and, and walk the council through this, since you've been involved with this from day one.
I hope you all found your packets in the drop box, there's a lot of pages in there. What I've done is compile all the applications that I've received. I take out some newspaper ads, we do lots of online advertising, just to get people interested and let them know that we are accepting applications. So what I've done is take all the applications and compile them for you. Each applicant will indicate which boards and commissions they're interested in serving on. So from there, I've gone ahead and, and made a list of all the boards that we have, the vacancies that we've got available, and the reappointments that were requested by currently serving members that are eligible to serve another term. So you'll see, each one listed in alphabetical order with the vacancies and reappointments, and underneath you'll see the applicants who were interested in serving on each board.
Rachel, please note, if you would, about the reorganization of.
Absolutely. You've received memos from Joey Lee about the Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning. We had the discussion about reorganizing Board of Adjustment to reduce the size of the board. So at this point, this will be an entirely new board, everyone's service will be kind of wiped clean. And in his memo, he's proposed that some members who had previously served continue to serve on this newly organized board. And there are a couple of vacancies indicated as well, that will need to be filled by you through some of these applicants. Planning and zoning, you also received the memo, that's on hold right now until the June work session, I believe, he proposed, for you guys to talk about reorganizing that board, and at that point, you can go ahead and fill in those vacancies.
Do you have a sheet that you have on your, in front of you? The sheet that I put together, the spreadsheet, taking the information that Rachel provided us, and created a spreadsheet with the proposed information, and also the applications versus the vacancy that we had, looking back through the appointments that I've made, I think we had a total of five people that we did not utilize. If you look at the yellow line across the spreadsheet, you will see two. We have a vacancy, one vacancy left, a minimum housing. You'll also see that we have a vacancy in Tree and Appearance Commission as well. Everything else has been, a person has been placed in the vacancies. So like I said, we have probably five names that we did not utilize, and I, it would be my recommendation to the council to ask Ms. Holliday, if she would go back and ask the five that we didn't utilize, if they'd be interested in the two vacancies that we do have, or if council has a better recommendation for.
I think if we have folks that are currently interested, and they've already had their applications on file, that should be our first choice.
Give him a buzz and ask him if he wants to serve when he's one of those.
So let me ask you this, what happens if we, to move this process along, let's say we call all five, and we get a note, do we go ahead and give permission to Rachel to seek some more applicants for these two spots? Any problems with that? Okay. Any other comments or questions about this?
I'll be in touch with you guys about those.
Thank you.
Post-tie line, these are effective July one. If you could make them those, so if we could do this in June, that would be, I think we give, we give everybody an opportunity to go forward. We have a somewhat unusual, well, all of them are, but a somewhat of an unusual water and sewer request, that's, Lanny's going to talk to you about, this comes as a result of some DOT work. So it's an outside of the city, but as a result of DOT widening of a road. So Lanny, I'm going to let you, if you would, kind of explain this, and we'll go forward from there.
Thank you, Harold. As Harold explained, recently, I was contacted by the North Carolina Department of Transportation regarding the intersection improvement at Glencoe Road and Highway sixty-two. This improvement involves the relocation of the intersection to the north, to improve the site distance at the intersection. It's been involved in a number of traffic incidents due to the, the visibility there, and this should help in that situation. In doing that, the impact of this property has been significant on this corner. The access to the property has been negotiated, and the access, as negotiated with the DOT would impact that property's septic field. The DOT has offered to the property owner, with the city's agreement, that they would supply them with a new water and sewer tap, and, and the property owner is agreeable to, to the outside city rates at this point, in discussion with the DOT. This, if, it was explained to me by the right-of-way agent with the DOT, that if this property owner, if, if they're not able to move ahead with the access point at this location, the, the DOT's location, as prescribed to the property owner, was here along sixty-two, the property owner was not in agreement with that, and they are afraid that if they can't go with the revised location, they would have to condemn the property.
Is this five points?
No, it's four.
It's before that.
Four.
At Old Glencoe Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The issue here is, this is an overhome, and, and now that there's a repair allocation or repair site on each area for septic field, which is still bad, we don't think that's present here. This is outside of the city, the lines are there.
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken, Lanny.
That's correct.
A similar, well, a different request was made in December of eleven from a property owner.
Mr. Buckland, just to the north of this, for water service.
Which the city, obviously, granted, was a not annexed area. My knowledge, this is the first one I can recall where it's driven by transportation improvements. The gentleman didn't, property owner didn't originate this, it's going to be a result of the, of the road improvements.
So basically, with our assistance, they can expedite the process. Obviously, it's going to be better for the landowner, because there's going to be no condemnation action to take place.
Correct.
And we'll be working in tandem with the DOT to, to accomplish the task, and ultimately, it's for safety.
Right.
Across the board.
And if you choose to do this, the gentleman would be paying the outside rates. Pardon me?
Is he also agreeing to come into the city at that point in time when we ask?
Well, now, that's still the question, you know, do you want to go forward with annexation outside here now? I mean, if we go forward with that, we'd have to do, if you agree to do that, we'd have to, he'd sign something, we'd have to, point in time, do we advertise that? If, you know, where, where are you on that? Y'all, you follow what I'm saying?
I thought that was our position, that we, we were doing, doing that.
Yeah, I thought that was consistent with what we're currently doing.
What we're currently doing. Mr. Bateman, is that not what we started with, with the policy?
Yes. And the policy has been that we require the petition, but the council has declined to accept them immediately.
Right, right.
And the council has further declined to advertise remedial action as well.
If you don't want to do it.
Right, right.
And we'll have to explain this process to the broad view.
Well, I think it's important that we keep it consistent with what we're currently doing.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The state requires us to, to, to submit a plan approved by them for debris management, and I'm going to let Nolan, that, that entails much more than it sounds like, but Nolan's been working on this now for the last.
Year.
Year. We had to, I had to attempt to go Plan B a couple times, but he, tonight, has the plan that we believe it would meet the state requirements, and something that we, we can do utilizing our own property, which is another important factor, so.
Mayor, Councilman, debris management plan, I wanted to, we've put this together, I believe you had a link to that in the information that went out, and hopefully you've had a chance to, to peruse that. This is certainly an effort we've taken to try to be proactive in our efforts, should an event occur. Certainly, North Carolina's climate, as you know, can result in various forms of severe weather. We're all aware of that, and over the past twenty years, City of Burlington has experienced a number of severe storms. Some of those were FEMA disaster rate declared events, and you can see some of those up on the screen. Numerous misses also for nearby areas, when you think of Hurricane Floyd in ninety-eight and Hugo in eighty-eight. So it's been about ten years before we've had, since we've had a major storm in Burlington. I don't, I don't want to jinx anything here, but I'm just saying. So our past experience and present concern has, has led us to developing this debris management plan. I thought I'd just show you some pictures. Gary Hicks was very instrumental in helping us put this info, information together. He had a lot of experience in working some events in the past. All these pictures you're going to see were from the, the May two thousand event. As you recall, that was a straight line wind that, that came in from the, from the northwest, and did a lot of damage in a very little bit of time, with very little bit of warning. There weren't any significant, it's hard to see that picture, but Gary said that was one of the largest trees in Burlington that went down, needed special equipment. Aquatic center bubble was damaged, just a lot of damage across the city. That's an interesting picture there, that, they were actually in the, involved with some roofing work when the winds hit. City Park Number Five, another damaged vehicle. This is a Pine Hill Cemetery, you see all the flyers piled up against them. This is an interesting picture, somebody said you'll never see this again. Because Tony.
Is he working?
Tony's got work gloves on. I didn't say I agree with that, Tony.
I've got a lot of trees, drug a lot of brush.
Yeah. So anyway.
Let's go back to the original frame, that picture's up there, you'll never see that again, right? Put gloves on.
And we're not talking about that large tree down over, over a couple, yeah. Anyway. So with any event, certainly, you know, we cut and clear the road, we remove debris, and then we have to manage those sites, and there's a lot of work goes into that. This, this particular device is called a hogzilla, it really chews up the debris material, because you do have to get rid of it. The, the reason why we're doing this, the purpose of it, is obviously debris removal can be costly and time consuming, so FEMA urges us to develop a plan, and, and so that's what we've done. And by developing this plan, it's a proactive approach and puts us in a good position to help expedite cleanup, should we have a, a major event. In addition, having this plan in place can position us better for getting federal aid from, from, from the state as well, from state funds, should it be a declared event. As you know, every storm's a little bit different, so we have to make sure that the plan is flexible in that way, we try to do that. The plan provides us with a guide, gives organizational, organizational structure, defines responsibilities of staff and departments. It's a blueprint for making decisions. When, when the event hits, you pull this document out, and it, and it helps guide your, your decisions, and helps protect citizens from potential threats for health and safety. And another big piece of this, it includes contracts in the appendices for debris removal, should we have a large-scale event where we need to, to bring in some support. And it also has a contract in there for hiring somebody to do the monitoring, which can be, depending on the event, a reimbursable expense. That would allow your staff to continue doing what they normally do, and not have to be dedicated for a long period of time to do the monitoring. So both of those contracts are in the, in the plan as well. So actions going forward, if, if the council's comfortable with this, we'd like to place it on the May twenty-first agenda for adoption, and then, once the plan is adopted, we'd like to work with purchasing to go ahead and request proposals for the two contracts that we have, and they were called preposition contracts, because you want to get contractors already on board, so if an event hits, you just pick up the phone, make a phone call. So this would put us in a proactive position, should an event occur. So that's, that's where we're at, at this point, and certainly.
Question, comments?
Yeah.
Prepositioned contracts that you do, and I'm assuming you guys go through a normal process where you choose a contractor that's got all the proper liability and insurance and whatnot, from that standpoint, is there a need for more than two? Because obviously, if it's a big event, they could be impacted. They may not have the capabilities of.
That's right. That's a really good question. In fact, when we put together the contracts, we, we structured them in such a manner that if the first contractor is not able to respond, we can go down to the second, second one on the list. So in essence, we're going to be prequalifying contractors as part of that process. So in essence, we're going to be pre-qualifying contractors as part of that process. And we also have the ability to go, storm hits, you know, we're just going to see what, you know, not even go with that and go ahead and bid it out anyway. We want to, you know, see what the prices look like. So we have some flexibility.
So we got flexibility to do that.
If y'all recall, in 2000, Durham caught an awful lot of criticism because they didn't move to clean up streets. Three years, or two years ago, there was an incident in Raleigh, especially out in North Raleigh, in the Wakeville community, same thing occurred. And believe me, the cities, we don't do this, you get awful response, because it's ugly stuff. It's just land that's about its streets, it also creates some hazard in terms of safety for public safety, and for that matter, even just us doing regular public works in terms of garbage collection and recycling. You know, you hope this doesn't happen, but we're not staffed to handle something like this, to move and get debris taken away. We actually even do this with snow also, on major areas downtown where we have to move snow away.
One year, we got caught with snow downtown, and, I mean, we had to get everybody, John, Peter, Sam, to get snow out of the streets. But you went back to where you're gonna, we have the land to take all the debris to. You said, you mentioned that.
Yeah, good question, and that's identified in the plan there. We have a couple of what we call temporary disaster debris sites that are permitted through Deener, and then there are other private sites that are permitted that we can take there as well.
How about permitted areas?
Permitted areas are Anthony Road and Indian Valley. Now, we don't have large amounts of area there, and, you know, we're looking to see where we might go to create some more space, working with Deener on some things, so just in case we had a large-scale event.
I know, Harold talked about in Raleigh, I happened to be in Raleigh when they had the storm down there, and they put it all out on 70, and they had the stump grinder out there, whatever you want to call this thing, and that's where they'd take it all out and grind it up. You can do the same thing, you just wait till after the debris is cleaned from the street to go out and...
Well, first thing we do is, you know, we're gonna, you know, cut and clear, and then determine how much debris we have. Can we handle it in-house? If not, let's enact this contract, and then depending on, well, certainly hoping we have between us and all the private sites enough space to take it. If not, we'll make, we'll figure out a way to get it somewhere. But I think we're in good shape from what I've seen.
When these issues occur, our first deal was working with Duke Energy, of course, clearing blind area, and we encourage citizens not to get out there and do it themselves. And it's, Jim, I think that'd be an interesting comment, do we need to increase our inventory of potential contractors, let's say it's a sweeping type of event, so there's enough people we can get to? That's an interesting question. Because this can be a competitive number of people looking, we won't be this by ourselves.
That's right.
That straight line wind in 2000 just simply came from, out of nowhere, and if you, I'm not sure, I believe it was Wednesday night of last week, we got, West Burlington got a large rain, but what we did miss was, they were calling, and they missed, thank God they missed Swebsenfield, that area was potential straight line winds of 58 miles an hour was the forecast for there. So many of us remember that day, that came from nowhere.
Yeah.
Early morning.
Harold, let me ask a question on that pre-position. Will that then include pricing? In other words, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's a good time to get the price, because if you get it in emergency condition, they tend to...
Absolutely. That's another reason we're doing that as well.
That's a real good idea.
Another thing, and some of you all remember this, in 2000, was that we had an awful lot of private contractors come in to do residential jobs. Many of you heard complaints because the contractors, whether they intentionally did or not, misled some people by telling them they would cut the wood off and move it. Well, what they did, took it and took it to the street for the city to pick up. We had a number of elderly people complain that they were billed for removal, and that's just people coming in as a result of an issue, and just going house to house doing this. That certainly isn't covered here, but we need to do a better job of public information to let people know coming in, what we can pick up and so forth. The situation in Durham that year was absolutely awful. I mean, Gary Hicks had to actually go down and testify in front of the city council with the Duke, the night of the Duke Energy on that, and it piled up, and then the city decided not to issue an outside contract, and it creates some real issues, real big issues. All right, that comes back to on the 20th, right, Nolan?
All right. We would ask you also to just think about some consideration of some council meetings going forward. July 2nd this year is the council meeting, which is the Tuesday night of the week of July 4th. We would ask, and this is your call, if you can maybe entertaining, potentially counseling that meeting right now, I've asked staff to take, to give us projections on projects coming forward for agenda items. We would ask to reschedule the July 1st work session, if we do that, to July 15th. And if I might, I'd like to get feedback at the retreat, we talked about coming back and have an additional discussion about public transportation. If you would like to have a significant part of that meeting dedicated to that, we certainly can begin that process of apparent, if you wish to, on the 15th. That's totally up to council. And then on August 6th is the annual national night out, which in the past, council has all participated in and gone out. Last year, we moved that meeting from Tuesday night to Wednesday night, the 7th, it'll be the 7th this year, or council can determine if they want to meet that first week in August or not. I had one of you all ask me, "What does other cities do in the summer?", and it's all over the board. Chapel Hill, I believe, actually, doesn't meet in the summer. They just call it quits in May, on the 1st of June. It adjourns for a while. Many cities do that. So I would, if you could think about this, and at the next council meeting, we'll, if it's okay, we'll put this on agenda, and we can have some discussion, or you can discuss tonight if you wish to, whatever your wishes might be for some of these sessions in the summer. I would also tell you that it's been the tradition that council has done community meetings every other year, and this is the year. We've begun four each year, divided them up and go in each section of the city. We normally do that in August or September. If you would like, we can begin to start contacting various facilities and making arrangements if you wish to do that again this year.
Well, I'll tell you, my thoughts on the public transportation for July 15th, I've got two thoughts there. One is, I know one of the things that we were asking staff to come back with, if I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but is a proposal of some of the work that's already been done with regards to some proposed routes and that sort of thing, just to sort of bring everybody to speed on what's already out there. And the second comment I'll make about it is, if we're going to have community meetings, I think it's important that we have this work session prior to those community meetings, because that's always a topic that comes up at every one of those community meetings. And it's just time we go ahead and address it and hit it head-on and see what we can do with it.
I agree with that.
I agree with that. One further comment with respect to the scheduling, I would ask that that August meeting be canceled, because I'm gonna be out of town on August the 7th, it's an annual professional meeting I go to each year, and...
I would second that.
So perhaps a great idea back to July, in terms of transportation.
Okay, so you're talking about the August 20 meeting council?
Seven.
August 6th. Six. Well, actually, the six.
Six. Six council, it all gathered, instead of...
Right, right, exactly.
So you have basically the two meetings in June, one in July, and one in August.
We still could go out, national now.
Renee mentioned something in her work of United Way, of the various agencies that contacted them this year, her group about funding, and a number of the local agencies continue to speak on their interest in public transportation for the need of, so we'll come back on the 15th and dedicate a lot of that work session.
One other thing, too, that you asked about with the target group of the ridership at the retreat.
Yeah. As we find out, you know, the group that's going to be served, you know, and the numbers.
And we've talked to Mike, and he is going to use some data from other cities in reference to particular agencies that would be involved in providing ridership, based on the situation in other communities there, too.
So we good with putting this on the agenda, Jennifer, ma'am? The following, if you see it, this canceled the August 6th meeting altogether?
And July 2nd.
Right.
And then we moved the work session from the 1st to the 15th.
That's correct. Let's just put that on the agenda, May, and be done with that.
I'm asked each meeting now to talk about legislation. The Asheville bill about transferring the system passed, the governor did not sign it, but he went into law.
Wait, you don't want me to interrupt you on that? You know, I was under the impression that the House Bill 488 was going to be a local bill. I thought that's the conversation that we had, and then we find out, and it goes back to Molly McGowan's article in the Times News yesterday, or, yeah, yesterday, wonderful article. However, it concerns me that I thought it was a local bill, ended up being a statewide bill, and if it's a statewide bill, how is that Raleigh and Charlotte basically excluded themselves from the bill? And the reason I even bring it up, I certainly don't want us to be sleeping at the wheel here. Obviously, we should have gotten involved, I think, along with Raleigh and Charlotte to be excluded from that bill as well. But again, I go back to what I said earlier, I thought it was a local bill, just to Asheville and no one else.
Charles, you may want to kind of add a constitutionality of this, what you ran into with the...
No, they ran into the same problem with the local bill that we ran into with our proposed local bill for sewer, or for water services, sewer service, that we asked them to pass, and the bill drafters declined to do it, citing a statutory and constitutional provision in North Carolina Constitution that says that there can be no local bills affecting human health and safety, and that they construed, and there's an old court case that says water and sewer services are health concerns, so they have a case on point, Bob, that says that this cannot be a local bill if it affects a water system or sewer system. For that reason, they tailored that bill so that only a very narrow range of cities could qualify for it, which is not unusual when the state determines that they have to make a statewide bill, but they only want to have local implications. As a matter of fact, as I understand the bill, Raleigh and Charlotte were the only cities who could remotely come within the parameters.
Huh, surprise.
That's based on population, it's based on the concept of having a sewer authority already existing in Fenton County. If I'm not mistaken, there was discussion, too, at some point in time that it would require unanimous vote of all cities. I'm not sure if that was part of the final bill or not, but...
So I guess the point of the whole conversation is, obviously, it's a statewide bill, obviously we need to do our homework, and we need to get on the stick to protect our assets. If it can happen to Asheville, then it can happen to us, and my question then goes back, is our delegation going to be supportive of us protecting our assets? So the question, I guess, is, what do we need to do? Do we need to write a letter? What do you think, Gas?
You'd have to amend, you know, the bill as it is and try to build a broader category where we could sort of throw, we'd either qualify by population and be exempt. Isn't that the way it's done, Charles? It's done by population?
Population.
And what they've done, they've just taken the two largest cities and said, "Okay, they can be exempt, it will not apply." But I don't know, what you'd almost have to do, tailor the bill where it'd be 50,000-plus population to be exempt. And of course, all the cities under 50,000 population are going to be upset, but the bottom line is, we've got to ask for the population category to include us, to exempt us, and have to ask, that bill's been adopted, amended, to be amended to do so, but I don't think it can be done now, have to be in that session.
Not now, it'd be in the next session. I'd be happy to get a copy of the bill as ratified and give you a synopsis of what makes it applicable and what doesn't at the next meeting.
Is it population or is it users of the system?
I'll have to get the bill, Jim, and I'd be happy to do that.
But number's 125,000 as we speak.
Because if it's users of the system, we've got technicals on our system that could potentially pull in, pull us into a category.
And the concern that we would have, we're, number-wise, we're okay, except if you were to try to qualify Greensboro as part of that, and we're a small provider of Greensboro, but they might want to come back and try to say that number of people, then it would, you know, would be some of the concern. Now, certainly, I read a sewer nonprofit could be formed, pretty hardly, you got any assets, but everything is still... I will say, we've had one email from a gentleman who's very passionate, but I got to say, we have not heard anybody talking about private groups coming in and taking utilities over. That comment's been made in writing to a couple of us. I have not heard that.
Say that again.
We have not heard about any private industry coming in trying to take these utilities over. The only one that I know to happen was Bob and you in Pennsylvania, and make sure that was, not many private people want to come in and take failing systems or non-profitable systems over. Okay? So, but again, I think your points were all taken about what we can do to try to protect us going forward.
What happens if, just like when the drought years, where the state was going to set up the water system, you know, it's like they're going to come in and take over our water system, furnish water to everybody else.
Well, that was a nice comment made, but the question was, how are you going to get the water from here to Raleigh? And that's a pretty darn, that's a, I think the state had $7 million, that wouldn't have got the water line to wit it.
Not at 1.3 million per mile, per 6,000.
So that would be a huge, now, it gets a different situation in terms of basin control, though.
And the last comment that I...
I'll have to record that out in your email before the meeting next morning.
The last comment I would make, I keep seeing the ads in the Times News in reference to being opposed to the two bills, Senate Bill 287 and House Bill 504, where it's, that is, my understanding, a local bill that talks about mandatory ads for municipalities and newspapers, you know? And I think it's important for people to understand that we're not in that group of Greensboro, Charlotte, Raleigh, we're not advertising to say that we want to be included in that group as well, so, but I see the articles daily, so I don't know where it stands in Raleigh, whether it's passed both or not, waiting on the signature of the governor or not, but we do advertise, and we, I guess we'll continue to do that until we see fit to do otherwise, but at this point in time, I'd like to have some credit from the council, we're not moving in that direction at this point in time.
We didn't push that, because honestly, we still believe it's a number of people in our community that's not internet connected, and with the state bill last year changing the demands for utilities to provide and run internet to certain communities where they're not financially affluent, that number will still remain pretty substantial going forward. Any other questions or comments? Thank you all.
Thank you.